Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We certainly appreciate everyone being here. As you may see, that we are laughing and having fun. That's the way it should be. Uh, we're certainly grateful for this day, and I am calling the meeting to order. This is our second one of this month, and I'm calling the meeting to order. And we, again, we just really like to thank everyone for being here and the ones that are watching, and to all of our team members. Uh, we certainly appreciate that. With that, the meeting is called to order. At this time, I would like to ask if we can stand, and I would lead in the invocation as well as with the, uh, prayers. If we can all bow, please. Once again, Heavenly Gracious Father, uh, because of your mercy and grace, that we all need to be mindful of each and every day that you give us an opportunity to move and to live and to have our being. We are certainly grateful for that, only because of your mercy and grace. But Lord, I ask that you allow us to all realize that you give us this opportunity for a reason, to be a lifter and not a leaner. And Lord, I ask that you continue to bless this council, bless this city, bless the workers of this community. Lord, bless the workers of this city. And Lord, we just ask that you allow all of us to have the heart of the spirit, that we can continue to be a lived-in community. A lived-in community with a culture that shows love. A lived-in community, Lord, that has humility, that thinks of others more than we do ourselves. That we continue to be a lived-in community. Lord, that know how to treat each other and to respect each other and to show each other that the way things are, that we can set an example. We ask that you open every person's heart in this community, Lord, to realize that this council is a council who cares and who is a council that loves, that is a council that gives of themselves to make things better for the quality of life of the people in this community. Lord, we ask that you continue to give us that guidance, that spirit, that love to lead with humility, which is one of the greatest attributes that any of us may have. But it can only come from you. And we thank you, Lord, that we do what is right, that the intention in our hearts are pure, that our motives are pure, and that in everything we do, we bring you praise and glory. In your son's name we pray, Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
If we can face the flag, please. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much, and again, we appreciate everyone for joining us and being here. At this time, uh, council, we do not have any presentations or proclamation, so at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes of July the fifth, uh, work session, as well as July the sixth, council meeting. And since we were all here, I would ask that we take this in one vote. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, uh, motion, Councilwoman Johnson, second, Councilman Day.
That's right.
We have the motion in the second. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, at this time, are there any unfinished business? Okay. Seeing that there is none, we will proceed with the resolutions. And on the administration, the first one is a resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-nine to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into a sign and service agreement with Windstream Holding Incorporated to amend an existing thirty-six months agreement. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has an existing thirty-six month service agreement, agreement with Windstream Holdings Incorporated doing business as Windstream for telecommunication services under the authority of resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-three that expires on January the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the city recently received notice from Windstream that two copper TDM-based primary rate interface PRI services will be sunset on September the sixth, twenty twenty-two, in favor of newer, faster fiber-based services. And whereas the city has received a proposed amendment to the Windstream service agreement, agreement that would extend the term to thirty-six months from the amendment effective date, mitigate the aforementioned copper-based services to fiber-based services and upgrade the existing fifty MBPS fiber internet service at the wastewater treatment plant to one hundred MBPS for cost-saving purposes. And whereas Windstream has a promotion going on for renewals and will give the city a bill credit equivalent to two months of service in the amount of five thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars, two cents, paid as credit on the first two consecutive bills after installation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. Section one, the mayor and city manager are hereby authorized and directed to execute, and the city clerk hereby authorized and directed to attest on behalf of the city, the amendment to the Windstream service agreement, agreement, and quadruplet. A copy of said amendment is attached hereto, incorporated herein, and made a part hereof by reference. Section two, severability. If any section, clause, sentence, or phrase of this resolution is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, this holding shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this resolution. Section three, effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon approval. Passed, approved, and adopted this eighth day of July, twenty twenty-two. Ratified this nineteenth day of July, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, council, I would like to ask the council for a motion to ratify. May I have a motion to ratify?
Motion to ratify.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Question, comments, or discussion?
Can, uh, someone tell us what, if we didn't change over from copper to fiber, what does this operate then at wastewater? And I know at some point in time, if, if we don't change over, it goes away, I'm sure, because we're gonna be required to.
Yeah, come and equate it.
So the two, the two services that are being sunset, um, the reason they're being sunset is because AT&amp;T is currently in the process of replacing all the copper in Phoenix City with fiber. And those two services, they provide phone service to, um, twenty-five of our locations. And, um, so basically, in exchange for, um, renewing the term for an additional thirty-six months, they're gonna upgrade those two services for free to fiber. And, um, there's a couple other services that they're gonna upgrade, like the internet service at the wastewater treatment plant. The cost of, the monthly cost of that is actually kind of down, um, a little bit. So we're getting a faster speed for less money. Um, so we did that for cost-saving purposes.
And this fiber is gonna be, what, it's gonna be the next ten years, probably twenty years, I mean, whatever. I guess like copper, sooner or later was phased out. Fiber could be, but I mean, for the next multi-years. We should be all right. That's what everybody, I'm assuming, is going to and had been for a while.
Yes, sir. That's what everybody's going to, is fiber is the future, and that's what everybody's going to. There is no other technology out there currently that's, that's as good as fiber.
Good.
And we've been having fiber on Broad Street, right, that extension?
Yes, sir. Most of our locations, um, we don't have that many copper services. Um, most of our services have already been converted to fiber already.
It's, it's, it's a couple things that's going on when we got the information on this. And, uh, I'm finding that we're running into this quite a bit with contracts that's in place. There's not, you know, people looking at the short, looking at gasoline prices. They're looking at shortage of food prices and all that, and what things are changing. But a lot of stuff, these innovative things that we deal with, technology, they let us know this at the last minute.
They might as well have this at the last minute, so, um...
And, and, and you didn't have a choice. And when you get a hurt, we hear the word sunset.
Yeah, you gotta, I mean, you gotta make a move. There's no choice left.
Yeah, yeah. We had no, we had no, we was put in a corner.
But it's not like they all trying to work with us, though.
But we got some good, they working with us to get some good things out of it, but it was one of those things where we had no choice regardless.
We had no choice. It's kinda interesting, 'cause, see, our service provider is Windstream.
Mm-hmm.
But it runs over AT&amp;T's network. So it runs over AT&amp;T's copper. And AT&amp;T gave Windstream notice that they're gonna be, be replacing all their copper with fiber. And so Windstream had to, you know, make the decision to get all those customers, all their customers that are running over that copper, they had to get them off of there, get them migrated over.
Well, they're working with us, and I'm assuming working with all their customers, so that, that shows good faith.
Yes.
Well, let me ask you this, Mike. Um, in replacing, uh, those item at the water treatment plant and the sewage plant, does ADM play a part in that as well?
No, sir. ADM?
No.
No, sir. ADM doesn't have anything to do with this.
All right.
This is just gonna increase their, their network speed. It'll provide them with better quality of service to be able to support, um, these upcoming state of, state of system upgrades that they have going on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Any other comments, discussion? If not, at this time, council, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, on administration. We have resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one thirty to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to accept and approve a change order for the cleaning of digester one in an amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-seven accepted the bid from Denali Water Solutions to clean digester one at the wastewater treatment plant, WWTP, at a cost of one hundred seventy-three thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars. And whereas a valve at the digester mixing station, which is typically closed and is openly, opened only once a year to exercise the valve, was recently found to be partially open, which allowed sludge to seep from digester two to digester one, causing more sludge to be pumped from digester one than was anticipated. And whereas the digester needs to be completely cleaned to allow for full inspection of the digester seals and piping, and to allow the full volume of the digester to be used for sludge digestion. And whereas Denali Water Solutions has submitted a change order estimating that an additional ninety-five dry tons of material will need to be removed from digester one at the bid price of nine hundred ninety-six dollars per dry ton, which would increase the cost of the cleaning by ninety-four thousand six hundred twenty dollars, and the total cost would be two hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred one dollar. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept and approve the change order for the cleaning of digester one in the amount of ninety-four thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Passed, approved, and adopted this thirteenth day of July, twenty twenty-two. Ratified this nineteenth day of July, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask the council for a motion to ratify this resolution. May I have a motion?
Motion to ratify.
Motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Comments or discussion?
Can someone answer whether it was, is that valve automatically open, manually open? Or how do you check that to know that it was left or not left open?
Yeah.
So someone just, because it's not open one time a year, just, I guess it's not on your mind, is, I guess is what I'm saying. It's really not something you would do normally or check normally because it's used so infrequently. But I mean, is that something we should have caught, or something that we could have, we could have caught a little while ago?
Sometimes I should have checked, but that valve, have the gate, when it's open, you see it up.
Right.
It was only up, like, eight and a half maybe.
Just so, it was only open a little bit, so therefore, it was only elevated a little, I guess.
I'm assuming when they closed it back, say, a year ago.
Right.
Something was in there, they didn't notice it, it didn't close completely.
Right.
And then it just let...
So just a, I'm gonna say, a little bit, evident, you know, a little bit continuously, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
Over, and it was not a, wound up being maybe a large amount, but it was not a large amount all at one time. It was a little bit going on, but just somebody just, because it's something we do so infrequently, I guess. It's just something that you wouldn't walk by a little, if you had a door in your office that you always kept locked, nobody used, I guess you really wouldn't check it every day, is what I'm saying. I guess that's the reason why I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay. Got, but I mean, they got it now, where they would know to check that thing continuously now? Where this wouldn't happen again?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is the port that you had sent to Atlanta and get, someone had to work us to Atlanta and get? Is that the bay of, Mr. John?
No, that was on a, like, a lift station or something.
Okay.
Where that wasn't working. I think, and that's what you're asking.
Explain to them, John, where this is located and what we're really dealing with, what sludge is. That's, this is something, I wanna show you when they're cleaning this. There's a whole different monster here that, that was cleaning.
The digester for wastewater treatment plant, they're large...
Could you lift the mic up and speak up, something? Yeah, now.
Yeah, now, okay.
The digester for wastewater treatment plant, they, they're large concrete containment vessels that, this, so sludge falls into the bacteria digest it over time. And these things over the years, sodas will settle out of them, which have to be cleaned out. But because of sodas, it takes up some volume, uh, mixture of, you know, minutes of gallons of volume. So these are wastewater treatment plant, that's the location. And if they're not cleaned out over time, like I said, they, sodas take over some of the volume. You're not able to use the full capacity of those. Also, you need cleaner and operator to check things like we mentioned, like seals, uh, and the piping themselves. And we have piping that have pumped through there, mixed the stuff up, to help with the digestion process also.
But it's not a frequent thing because it causes a shutdown of the amount of what's in there. When he's speaking that language, solids, y'all, we talking about waste.
Waste, yeah.
So it's not something you're going at all time, you know, it's just when, it's, it's a weird thing to keep up.
Well, when the material is hardened, the sludge, what we do with that? We haul it off or something?
Yes, sir. We have something to haul.
Take it to a special place?
Yeah, something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
For, and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that, which we got changed going on with some of those things, too. It's a, it's a nasty operation.
Okay.
We do it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Day. Mr. Bailey. Any other comments or discussion before we call for the vote? All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, on the administration is resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one thirty-one to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into a signed contract with Phoenix Paving and Maintenance LLC to pave the walking trail located at Fourteenth Avenue Park in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas a gravel walking trail was part of the initial construction of the Fourteenth Avenue Park. And whereas due to heavy rain events, the trail has become problematic, and to preserve it for long-term use, paving is recommended. And whereas the Phoenix City Engineering Department has received two quotes for the paving of the walking trail with Phoenix Paving and Maintenance LLC providing the lowest quote in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars eighty-nine cent. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the mayor and city manager to enter and sign a contract with Phoenix Paving and Maintenance LLC to pave the walking trail located at Fourteenth Avenue Park in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars eighty-nine cents. Passed, adopted, and approved this thirteenth day of July, twenty twenty-two. Ratified this nineteenth day of July, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Lee, for the reading of the resolution. Counsel, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify this resolution, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to ratify.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Counsel, any comments or discussion?
May I have a brief comment? It's, it's kinda cute. Um, on last night, um, I saw a news report that one of our officers responded to a, a, a house call. Young fellow, five years old, called nine-one-one. And, uh, I think it was Officer Bowden, if my memory serves me correctly. But little, um, Kylin, five years old, we call him Miguel, um, live adjacent to this park. And so we're glad to see that this resolution is taking place where we can begin to get some traction again on this park and hopefully get it open, uh, before year end. Uh, because again, Miguel wanted some toys, so he called nine-one-one. And the officer responded with toys, so we, we thank the officer for the kind gesture. But the citizens, that, the children that are in that area, they, they really want something to do. And so this is one of those, uh, projects that we hope to, uh, like I say, uh, see the park open by the, by the year end so that, uh, they will have, uh, those, uh, citizens in that area will have somewhere to go and play. So, but, um, the officer not only brought Miguel something, uh, Kylin, as they call him, um, they brought his little sister something as well. But, so thank you, Mr. Hunter, for taking, um, another step in making the, uh, walking trail, uh, getting it all together. And, and, you know, we did see where there was some washing and, and needed some paving. Uh, so thank you for, um, uh, getting that project together and, and getting this park, uh, up and running. We appreciate that, the citizens I know.
And the officer you're talking about was, yesterday when we had work session, that was him, that was guarding the door.
What, what was his name?
Um...
Larry.
Larry Holden.
Holden, okay, yeah, I thought I...
Yesterday when we had work session, that was him, that was there, so that, that was a good...
I didn't get a chance to call Miguel this morning, but I will.
Yeah, it was, it was a good thing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Counsel, any other comments, discussion? At this time, then, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, on the administration. We have a resolution in reference to approving and adopting the proposed budget for the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one oh seven approved a public notice which was published in the Citizen News of East Alabama newspaper on Thursday, June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, in reference to a public hearing on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed budget for the general fund and the utilities fund. And whereas the public hearing was held on July the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P.M. at the Martin I. Lila Park Community Center located at thirty-seven forty-three Moonlight Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty-three proposed budget for the general fund and the utilities budget. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget for the general fund and the utilities fund is hereby as, approved as proposed. A summary of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed budgets hereby attached and made a part of this resolution. Passed, approved, and adopted this nineteenth day of July, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution, the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion, counsel? Okay, if not, call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Proceeding on, council, also on the administration is a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign a lease agreement between the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and the Phoenix City Art Council for an additional two years in an amount of one dollar per year. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been approached by the Phoenix City Art Council requesting the renewal of the lease agreement of the building located at ten oh two Airport Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, formerly used by WPNX Radio. And whereas the Phoenix City Art Council wishes to use this building to exhibit local art, hold art workshops to benefit people of all ages, hold monthly meetings, and conduct regular art shows and other related activities. And whereas the City Council desires to grant the Phoenix City Art Council their request and to lease this building to the Phoenix City Art Council for two years with the option to renew for an additional two years in the amount of one dollar per year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, to grant the above-mentioned building to the Phoenix City Art Council for purposes, purposes mentioned above. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city manager hereby authorize and direct to sign a lease agreement between the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and the Phoenix City Art Council. Passed, approved, and adopted this nineteenth day of July, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you so very much, Mrs. Lee, for the reading of the resolution. Counsel, we've all heard this resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second, counsel?
Second.
Second from Councilman Bailey. Okay, we have the motion in the second. Counsel, are there any comments or discussion?
Um, yes, sir. When we lease this building, they cover, um, they have insurance to cover if anybody get hurt or something.
Yes, sir. They have to have coverage or insurance. They have to also, you know, they take care of utilities bills, they get your policy. So that's written in the contract.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Day. Mr. Hunter, any other comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, counsel. We have a public hearing in reference to the Bureau of Justice for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, also known as JAG, Problem Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-two Local Formula Solicitation. I am not, counsel, going to ask the clerk to read, uh, this resolution, uh, which was done at the last meeting. However, I am declaring this as a public hearing. And if there's anyone that would like to come and address counsel in reference to this, uh, JAG, uh, grant, now's the time to do so. Okay? Doesn't seem as we have anyone, so I am declaring this public hearing closed. But however, I would like to ask, uh, Assistant Chief to come and, uh, uh, just address and, and let the citizen know about this grant. This is something that, uh, they apply for each year, but Assistant Chief?
Good morning, Mayor, counsel.
Good morning.
Edward Byrne Memorial Grant is a Department of Justice grant that we've applied for that was available in two thousand and five, and we have received it each year. The grant is memorialized in NYPD officer who was slain, um, nineteen eighty-eight. He was about a year into the force, right out of the academy. He was, he was protecting some witnesses from drug gangs in Queens, was, um, gunned down in his car, ambushed. Uh, this fund, this grant funding is federal grant funding used, um, to enhance our ability to protect citizens and fight violent crime in our cities. It's a formula grant, so it's pretty consistent from year to year. Usually eighteen to twenty-one thousand dollars is what we hit the figure received. Which this year, the grant award is twenty thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars. It's a, it's a grant that we have to share with the Russell County Sheriff's Department. They're considered a disparate jurisdiction, so we can use the funding. And we have an O U or memorandum of understanding with the Russell County Sheriff's Department. Each year, one year, uh, we will use the funding to buy equipment with the Russell County Sheriff's Department. And then one year, it'll come to the city, so the lease department, which this year, the funding will come to the city. Uh, we've used it in the past to buy the equipment to increase our effectiveness. Tasers, computers for vehicles, ballistic helmets for the sheriff's department for their swatting, uh, tag readers, just a whole host of equipment. This year, what we proposed in our, um, in our proposal to, after grant application, is to buy ballistic shields to be issued to our patrol supervisors. We find four ballistic shields capable of stopping rifle rounds, seven-six-two, which is typically AK, um...
He's talking over our heads now, you know.
He's talking about him.
All you have to do is look at the news nowadays.
Yeah.
Shooting, school shootings, workplace shootings, the shooting at the supermarket in New York. Um, we've seen it locally with our shootings here locally that... We've seen it locally with our shootings here locally that used to, ten years ago, was typically pistol rounds. And now, we're seeing people using AKs, AR15s. So, these ballistic shields that we are proposing, purchasing with this grant money, are capable, they're Level 3, which are capable of stopping rifle rounds.
Is it a certain distance that, I mean, or just automatically stop regardless of the distance? And I'm just asking for my knowledge, Adam.
They're rated for, they test them, they're certified at various distances. There's federal standards, there are different level ratings.
That's good, that's good.
3A was the standard which would stop any pistol rounds that made. But like I said, now we're seeing an increase. It's not that uncommon for us to go to a shooting or a drive-by shooting incident where there's thirty, forty, fifty shell casings in the road. And not that uncommon where, like I said, rifle rounds, which are a lot higher velocity and bulletproof vests won't stop them. And this will give our officers, the supervisors, the sergeants and attendants will have them in their car. They won't have to wait on the SWAT team to come out if they have an incident. They'll have the shields to help protect them, make us more effective.
Let me ask you this, since they are so diligent in stopping these high-power weapons. How heavy are they? Are they pretty heavy or are they...?
These are about thirty-five pounds. They're not terribly heavy, but they're heavier. They're about twice the weight of the pistol rounds. So, yeah, they're considered, they have about thirty-five pound, thirty-two, thirty-five pound range.
Okay.
Do we have any ballistic shields already?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we do. The SWAT team, the special response team has them. However, when they're called, typically patrol, the uniformed officers are first on the scene. Have to deal with whatever situation. And as you've seen with these shootings throughout the country, time is of the essence. If you have somebody and the whole incident in Texas is just...
That's what I was fixing to say, that's the whole reason behind that is you had to wait, and then they waited, and then nobody knew what to do. First person there is going to react quicker than anybody else with the second person.
You can't wait for help, you need to...
Because they know what's going on when they get there.
Eliminate the threat.
Exactly.
And this will just be another...
You need that ability.
And not have to wait on people bringing equipment, having that equipment at the front line and moving and eliminating that threat, saving lives.
You need that ability to have that option to do something very quickly to eliminate and keep everything down, just like at that mall yesterday. You hate to see someone with a gun stop something. But it sounds like fortunately, there was a gentleman there with a weapon that was within the advance and kept it from being worse than it was going to be.
Yes, sir.
And of course, police can't be aware, they just absolutely can't. Y'all do wonderful jobs, just like the fire department, but they can't be aware. They can't foresee something happening before it happens. It's impossible to do. If it could, your job would be real simple and real easy, you could do it sitting at home. But it doesn't, y'all are on the front line, and it's, you need all protection you can get.
Yes, sir.
And you stated that the supervisor will have these shield in there, trunk of their car.
Yes, sir, they will be assigned to the patrol department and the patrol attendants. So, we plan to have four shields.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thanks so much, Assistant Chief. One thing I hope that we all can take away, we being the community, is that, and we always have done this, is trying to be proactive, to get ahead of it. So, we certainly appreciate that. And this is, as has been stated, we see all the horrific things that are happening. But again, I just want to commend you all for being proactive. This entire council wants to commend you all.
Absolutely.
Well, that's what I mean, the police and the fire department and the sheriff and all protect us and our citizens every day. And as any council, whether it be the county or the city, or whether it be the federal government, whoever, deserve the same respect back to the law enforcement people in the fire department and all them, to keep them safe, where they keep all of us safe. Because we may be sitting up here behind it, but we're regular citizens. Our families live right here in these towns, our businesses are right here. We're going to, we shop in these places. And unfortunately, this is, things like that are just becoming far too normal. And they're all over the United States now. There is not anywhere that's, you know, is immune from something like that possibly happening. And I hope to God that, you know, it would quit. And maybe someday it will. But we've got to do what we can do to protect them, because they're willing to protect us. And I, for one, appreciate that very, very much, so.
Chief, let me ask you something. I know back in the day, a few years ago, you can always see state troopers patrol in this area. It's well treated by Fast 431. They have special officers assigned to this district, is there state troopers?
They do. Lee County is the, I don't know if I can, the nearest trooper post. We actually had a little event yesterday that was, the media covered. The southern slowdown this time of year to address speeding and reckless driving, especially during the holiday, summer holiday season, when people are going on vacation. So, that's a southeast regional event program. And yesterday, we had troopers from Georgia, just one of our troopers, and we were down there trying to get that message out for people to slow down and pay attention, distracted driving, and, you know, just for everybody's safety.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir. Okay. Thank you all, council. Thank you, Assistant Chief. With that, we will proceed on on the Engineering and Public Works Department. Council, we have a resolution in reference to accepting the dedication of a public right-of-way between Marketplace Drive and U.S. Highway 280, 431 North, through the right-of-way dedication platform Marketplace Drive, Halpern Enterprises Incorporated and DGK LLC owners. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas, the Phoenix City Planning Commission has determined that it's in the best interest of the city to accept the dedication of right-of-way as dedicated by the right-of-way dedication platform Marketplace Drive, located in part of the northwest, fourth of section four, Township 17 North, range 30 East, Phoenix City, Russell County, Alabama, dated March the 25th, 2022, prepared by John C. Blount, registered land surveyor. And whereas, the owners of said property, Halpern Enterprises Incorporated and DGK LLC, desire to dedicate the same to the City of Phoenix City. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the dedication of said right-of-way as shown on the above-referenced administrative subdivision. Passed, approved, and adopted this 19th day of July, 2022.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second? Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion, council? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, council, on the Public Works and Engineering Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the purchase of 1-2022 John Deere FC-15M Flex Wing Rotary Cutter purchase on the Sourcewell vendor number 110719-JDC PG1P CG70 from Deere and Company in an amount not to exceed $22,802.44. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas, the State of Alabama Examiners of Public Accounts has reviewed and approved the competitive bidding process used by Sourcewell. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase the property herein after described on the Sourcewell bid for the Lambs and Debris Division in the Engineering Public Works Department. And whereas, Deere and Company provided a quote for 1-2022 John Deere FC-15M Flex Wing Rotary Cutter in an amount not to exceed $22,802.44. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the Engineering Public Works Department to purchase 1-2022 John Deere FC-15M Flex Wing Rotary Cutter purchased under Sourcewell vendor number 110719-JDC PG1P CG70 from Deere and Company in an amount not to exceed $22,802.44. Passed, approved, and adopted this 19th day of July, 2022.
Thank you. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilwoman Johnson, that's the second, Councilman Gordy. Mrs. Lee, we have the motion and the second.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, at this time, are there any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, at this time, we'll call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council. Now, on the Information Technology Department, we have a resolution in reference to declaring computers, cell phones, and miscellaneous equipment as surplus to be sold as scrap or to be disposed of at the city landfill. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas, the Information Technology Department of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas, Section 114356 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the described property as listed on the attachment entitled Exhibit A is hereby declared surplus to be sold as scrap or to be disposed of at the city landfill. Passed, approved, and adopted this 19th day of July, 2022.
Okay. We've heard the resolution read by our council, excuse me, by our clerk, council. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Any comments or questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, on the Parks and Recreation Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the purchase of two grasshopper mowers, model 337G5EFI, with 61-inch cutting deck under state contract number 22-6640, purchased for Moore Ridge Manufacturing Corporation in a total amount of $22,898.80. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas, under the Alabama Bid Law for Public Contracts, municipalities can purchase property under a state bid provided that the state bid provides. And whereas, Moore Ridge Manufacturing Incorporated provides a governmental pricing under state contract number 22-6640 for two grasshopper mowers, model 337G5EFI, with a 61-inch cutting deck. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase the property herein after described on said state bid for the Parks and Recreation Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following shall be purchased under state contract number 226640 for Moore Ridge Manufacturing Incorporated. Two grasshopper mowers, model 337G5EFI, with 61-inch cutting deck, $11,449.40 total price for each vehicle. Total amount for the two vehicles is $22,898.80. Passed, approved, and adopted this 19th day of July, 2022.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee, for reading the resolution. And council, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion, council? Okay? If not, at this time, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council, on the Police Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor, city manager, and the chief of police to enter into a contract with the City of Auburn for professional services. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and the City of Auburn, Alabama, desire to enter into a contract with the City of Auburn for professional services utilized in the Phoenix City Police Department. And whereas, it would be a benefit to the City of Auburn and the City of Phoenix City to enter into a contract for professional services and have a mutual aid agreement between the Phoenix City Police Department and the Auburn Division of Police. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager as authorizing officials and Raymond J. Smith as chief of police are hereby authorized and directed to sign the necessary documents for the above-referenced MOU and professional services contract with the City of Auburn. Passed, approved, and adopted this 19th day of July, 2022.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the resolution. Like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Counsel, are there any comments or discussion?
I'd like to ask a question. I've been on the council about nine years, I've never asked this question. I know we've been doing this for a number of years. But when our officer go over there, do they pair with the officer from Auburn, Oberlecker? I mean, what I'm trying to, I guess I'm asking, do they have arresting power over there? In order for them, they have to compare with the one officer of Oberlecker, Auburn.
Yes, Mr. Bailey, part of the agreement is they will have to sign a note of office with the City of Auburn, so they'll have arrest power.
Okay, okay.
Like Auburn officers.
Yeah, I was just wondering, all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now, this agreement is only valid during the football season, but not a year-round agreement, is that correct?
It's a year agreement, they have, the main purpose of it is for the football games and there's another event out in the summer, I believe. I can't remember off the top of my head what it's called.
Yeah.
But it's mainly to supplement them when they have those big game days.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Assistant Chief. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other comments or discussion? If not, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Proceeding on, on the Police Department, council, we have a resolution in reference to declaring $14,656 of unclaimed money as surplus to be deposited into the general fund of the City of Phoenix City to be utilized for law enforcement purposes. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas, the Police Department of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is in possession of unclaimed found property. And whereas, Section 114356 of the Alabama Code of 1975, as amended, authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded or otherwise unclaimed personal property. And whereas, the Phoenix City Police Department possesses $14,656 of unclaimed money and said property is declared surplus. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the $14,656 is to be deposited into the general fund of the City of Phoenix City to be utilized for law enforcement purposes. Passed, approved, and adopted this 19th day of July, 2022.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Any comments or discussion? Okay? Not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, council, on the agenda is the ordinance. This is a second reading. It is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter forty-six, Licenses, Taxation, and Miscellaneous Business Regulations. Article two, Sales Tax, Section forty-six dash twenty-three, Levy of Tax, Section forty-six dash twenty-four, Sales and Use Tax in City Limits, Section forty-six dash twenty-five, Sales and Use Tax in Police Jurisdiction, Section forty-six dash twenty-six, Privacy and As, Section forty-six dash twenty-seven, Effective Date, and Section forty-six dash twenty-eight, Solubility, and Section forty-six dash twenty-nine, Repeller. Again, this is the second reading. I'm not going to ask the clerk to reread this ordinance, council. The first one, as you all know, was on the sixth of this month. So with that said, I'd like to call for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I would have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second? May I have a second, council? Okay.
I'll second that.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. We have the motion and the second. Any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, call.
Can we discuss just a little bit? I know the city needs money. I know everybody does. But I still have the same reserve feelings that I had last time this came before us. It's all about timing. It's, everything in this country has gone up, everything locally for us, in my business, everything, in my home, everything for all of us. I'm no different than anybody else sitting out here. And the thing that I have pause with the most on this is the very people that this is gonna be the hardest on or the few that absolutely are gonna be hard pressed to be able to outrun any other increases, uh, from gasoline being up to the power system to go up. Uh, we've had an increase in our sewage and water rates, uh, which we need, not, not, and I voted for it. Uh, and it's needed. But just the cost of food, the cost of rent, the cost of housing, the cost of vehicles, every time you turn on the TV, everything is up. And I just have pause to add anymore to the burden to some of the people that absolutely just seem to can't get their head above water. And, uh, and I'm talking about a lot of people and I, this is no disrespect to anybody, but the people in public housing and all that throughout our city. Uh, they're the ones that's having the hardest time. And they're the ones that have to shop locally. They don't have the option to go across the river, go to another town, or maybe order something off the internet, have it shipped to their house. Just seems to me that the burden's gonna be harder on them and the elderly. And I just have a hard time. And I know we need the money. We have so many places in this city that the money can be used and so many places that the money can go a long distance for us. I really do understand that. And the only other thing that I have on that, I've talked to a lot of business owners this last couple of weeks since this has come up. And there's been an awful lot of them that can't promise me that even if we raise, and I'm talking about the city, just like I would be any other business, if we raise our minimum wage, that that's the problem with the workers. I do feel like it's something to do with that, but there's still signs up everywhere that they have already raised the minimum wage, trying to get the, the people to, to be employed and come to work and to apply for these jobs. And they're still not filling these jobs. I just don't know. I, I really think there's something else going on within our country of there's a generation of people, for whatever reason, just they don't want to work. I don't care what you pay them. Uh, I really do believe in that.
It's not to interrupt you, but it's the third thing to that too, because I talked to some.
No, no, wait.
The third thing is that this city is losing its workforce. The third thing is that we have workers that work for this city that qualify for poverty because they don't make enough money. This is something I did not want to go towards, period. But people forget that. We have, uh, we service the city, five hundred plus people. That is the thing. I didn't want to cross that line, period. We have no choice. Because the people that work here, that service this, we have to think about that too. See, it's a matter of time before y'all have to look me in the face and say, honey, you're not getting a job done. That's coming soon. Because we can't compete like we need to compete to have those people. And I have to understand that. And, and the people, other people here have to understand that too. We are competing to take care of this city overall. And that, that's, that's what, the third thing, I just, when, when, when they looking at everything, a lot of times people leave off those factors.
I agree with you on taking care of the people in the city. That's what we do right here and the citizens. All that has to be done with anybody that's in charge and doing anything that works for the city.
Yes.
And you're exactly right. I'm not disagreeing at all. I, I one hundred percent support you on that. I'm just wondering, can we take the money that we haven't spent the last year or two on the employees that were short? And raise some of this with some of that money to see if that starts fixing the problem? And if it does, I'd be willing to revisit this. I'm not saying that this is a bad thing. I'm just, I'm all about the timing of it right now, uh, as I was last time. We had just had an increase in gas prices through the, through the governor the last time this came up. So it's all about timing with me, uh, and the idea that you, that you got, nobody wants to go up on anything. All of us hate to do that. The only thing we'd love to see go up is what we can draw on our money in the bank. If we had it, we'd love to see that, the interest rate come up there. Other than that, nobody wants to ever see any, any.
Or your salary.
Anything, except your salary. But my point is, if we could do that, I'd be more for an occupational tax myself. And even if it was something that could, could come about later on on that and maybe be limited to three years, five years of some nature of that, to see if that helps. I'd be willing to, you might help us get over the hump and through the problem and, and correct the problem that we have. And the problem that we have is real, like you're saying. That, I do not deny that. I, I totally agree with that. I just know for a fact, and I've discussed this with other people, once something goes up like sales tax, it never does come back down. We have had soft drink taxes put on in the past to help the hospital out there one time, trying to save Cobb Hospital. And all that was temporary and all that stuff. I'd be more for something that's temporary to see if that does fix where our issues lie. And to put something on that stays on, that never comes back down. And it's gonna affect me as a business owner. So I can't sit here and, and face everybody
Well, well.
and think that I'm just talking strictly for everybody else's benefit and not my own. I'm talking about my own benefit.
Well, Mr. Bell.
And I'm never gonna be that, that naive to, to believe that I don't, I'm not included.
I didn't mean to interrupt you here, but there's two ways you can look at that now. There's two ways. You said, uh, you know, if we wait, keep waiting, the city be in worse shape than it is now. Because if we wait, the citizens that we, I mean, the folks that wait for the city, they're gonna be moving elsewhere, moving on to a higher paying job, which you can't blame them. But we must remember this, all of us, we must remember this. The strict to tell us the poor and needy we will have will for always. Always, that gonna happen regardless.
Well, I don't wanna add to those numbers though.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the difference. Say, we always, it's always gonna be poor people and rich people. And the people that will take care of everything. And it's always gonna be that way. And I agree with.
But some, but some of the, some of the decisions, some of the decisions we make.
Right.
We don't wanna make, but we must, must.
Well, I agree. I'm not disagreeing with anybody.
We gotta look at the, we gotta look at the overall picture. We gotta look at the larger picture. What, let me tell you, the only situation that we're facing is this. We're facing a time of where we are now. You cannot play Russian roulette with unforeseen money. Only, only tax that's around here that you can really just rely on that's gonna be constant is property tax. Sale tax is up and down. You can't, you can't rely, you can't look at that the way that's gonna be. That's different. The tax from when the government put all the money out here, the pandemic tax, which we've been using to buy a lot of equipment and to pay a lot of overtime for the people that we are working to death to take care of the shortages and stuff like that. But even talking to representatives of blacks here and trying to talk to that congregation, talk about, you're looking out, if even if you look at occupation tax, you're talking two years away from here. You'll be talking two years or more to even get to that point, try to get that started. And at this point, we, with public safety, what we are talking about, protection and taking care of people. We got Columbus, we got Auburn, Oberlecker, just stripping us of our workforce at this point in time because of the pay and where they're going to with it. So the only thing we really had to compete with and the time, just like we had the people that came before us yesterday. You're looking at six new businesses just with that one place, whatever, but when would they be built? When would they come at that particular time? And we're facing now. You know, we're not facing later. And you can't come over here and drain what you have and then you're in trouble because standards and pools is looking at you at that particular time because you're, you're draining, draining your security. So it's just a matter of eating and what we would have to do come October as far as trying to keep putting safety employees here and truck drivers. We have people that's picking up, people arguing about the garbage being picked up. Well, we can't get all the people here in, in that, competing with that pay when you got waste management and them paying their truckers eighty thousand dollars a year. So what they've done, they're draining people that we've trained and pulled us away from because they have taken that up to that. That's just something I didn't want to see us get into, but we into it. There's no running away from it, you know. But as far as personnel here too, that's experience and what's here and then whatever. We gotta change our pay. It's caught up with us.
Let, let me ask this question.
I know all of us gonna think different. And then, you know, look, it makes you feel bad. I sat here, I make six figures a year. I've worked all my life, forty-seven years. I've worked two jobs. I've been a business owner and everything else. Sometimes you have to talk about these things and you're talking about people that's needy with things. You know, it makes you feel bad. But at the same time, you know, been fortunate enough to work for the city, been fortunate enough to work other places, been fortunate enough to be trained and have education to be able to do some things that we're doing. So yes, I feel a, a, a lot of guilt when we have to make these type decisions toward people that may not have what we have at the same time. But I also have to look at the people that we hire and we are competing for and that, trying to get things and not be left behind also as far as up to them, everything, their total investment. So yes, it's, it's hard. It's, it's, it's harsh decisions. And this will be one of the last decisions associated with taxes that I'll ever be involved in and being employed in. I'm gonna make sure of that. Cause it is difficult when you're sitting in a seat to look and see the things that's happening around us right now. You know, just this morning, I'm working at a workforce at less than fifty percent, trying to get there. It's contributed to several factors, you know, that's there. But as far as for this city to maintain itself, if we're not gonna be in a competing business to, and that's at a small scale, that's nowhere near we, where we have to go to. But like I said, just on the phone yesterday, we're trying to deal with grant money from ADAC and dealing with the representatives for the state and stuff to make sure they can make up for some of these things and these tens of millions of dollars of streets that we gotta resurface, that we gotta bring in, that we gotta take care of. It's, it's, it's a lot to it. The garbage service, our cost is going up. That's what you all gotta realize. Our cost is going up. To operate that wastewater treatment plant and all those things to have to do, all these things gonna keep coming. Our system.
Everything else.
Well, that was, that was part of what I was saying.
Everything, our fuel cost is on the, our fuel cost, our equipment.
It costs us more to operate the city than it did in the past. Same thing. We, we're not eliminating something.
It's passed on to everybody. We can't stand still. And that, that's the problem. That's why this was put on here and presented. Which way you're gonna go at that particular time? And we're, we're responsible. But I understand exactly where you come from. And, and you got people that talk to you all about stuff just the same way they do us. But what's gonna happen with this city at that point in time if we can't compete in, in that particular market?
Let, let me ask this question. And, Mr. Hunter, you brought it up and you alluded to it too. As far as the occupational tax, when is it a good time? When, I mean, will that be a good time? Will that ever be a good time?
Troy is working. To me, yes, because that's the people that's gonna have a more sustainable, payable job that is working out of town for a reason. And generally that reason is they're being paid more than they would be paid maybe in their own hometown to make that travel. Like people working in the grains, going to Atlanta to work. It has to be money financially feasible for them to make that trip and that investment and everything.
But we're, that's.
To some, some degree.
We're talking about occupation. Occupation is gonna be on everybody. Are you talking about two or three years ago? Everybody work in the city where you work.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just saying that the people that can afford, they have more.
That has to go through the legislature. That is.
They're bringing it down the road.
That's correct. Even with that process going to there with Dr. Justin Edwards, like I say, with Troy. And he's working on that, but that is not even an option dealing with where we are now.
I know, but if I had an surety that if we offered to raise our minimum wage, our salaries, we already have wonderful benefits, people already retire. That's why these employees here are so loyal now is because they've got good jobs, paid fairly. Nobody's disputing that they, you know, shouldn't go up. I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying they're loyal to us because they're, they're good workforce, they're good people. We're gonna lose some of them from retirement. We're already losing people from retirement. We have to replace them with other good loyal people that'll be here. Like the mayor said the other day, there was a gentleman that had been here for five years. Three of those years has been rough on him because he's been doing, I'm sure, multiple jobs during that length of time. I mentioned that yesterday, that all our employees are doing, even our department head.
Well, let me explain that to you all.
But what I'm trying to say is that there's still no, even the people that I know have been willing to do this for six, eight, nine, ten months ago, they didn't have to have somebody to vote for them to allow to pay more if they could hire the workforce. They've still not been able to hire the workforce. So I still don't know that that's the issue that we face on workforce problems. It may be on keeping your workforce. So you, you could be correct on some.
We're losing, chief can tell you that right there. The other chief can tell you that right there. The department head can tell you what they are losing and why they are losing them and, and the competition that's there. You gotta understand, we had the best benefit package. We had everything else. But for other people to compete with us, they had to raise their standards. And that's what they did because they set something where the revenue was coming in, where they could do that. They had to compete with us. You gotta remember, we wasn't on the news. When I told you all this was gonna happen two years ago? And I, and, and you all knew I told you all that? You know, we had several meetings where you all was told.
What I'm saying is, there's still no guarantee if you raise it, the other people don't raise theirs. It's just like.
I understand the competition to a certain level.
You keep putting money out there.
But, but who started this? The federal government started this. Several years ago, they started this. We knew it was coming and, and I'm telling you then. When they started this, okay, we going up to fifteen and above throughout the nation and we are going here then whatever. Then you had.
Oh, you know, this man was gonna have to do this. That's right.
I told you, the young man that was talking that particular day, you gotta understand, he only been here a few seconds. What he's experienced in his short time is he's came in right during a pandemic. He came in during a pandemic first. Now, the pandemic hit us first. This thing about not working and the demands from hospitality.
That happened.
People that lower in the jobs came after that.
That's right.
That's a whole nother tidal wave of things that hit us to this point. Trying to solve that problem, we are fighting every day with our benefit. We're trying to reach what point we have to go to. But when you start having that loss in a city of public service workers and especially with police officers and the things that's going on, fire and those, and, and people start to run away. There's people who can retire, your experience level. It's so hard. You just can't bring people in and, and they reach, turn that curve to understand what's going on here. So yes, it's competitive. We have people being offered jobs all the time. I'm not putting that out there and complaining. We've had to manage over the past, since two thousand and eight. We've had to manage during some of the worst times since nineteen twenty-nine. People hadn't seen this.
Alvin George is just everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So at my term as city manager, it started off in the government. You know, two thousand seventy-eight when people turned things in left and right. We overcame it. We have done everything and put things in place and then having a city that's around us. Only thing I can say is the guarantee for this thing, what the city does is that they put the people money right back out there into the city. We make sure we do that. We make sure we do that because people are dependent on the upkeep of these streets and maintaining and getting things done. And the services, what we've got to get back up. And the reason why we gotta get back up is because the people we are contracting out, they get short. We, they get short. And then if they can't do the things that we're contracting out and we don't have workforce, that causes a gigantic delay, you know. And like I say, just looking right across the bridge, we got three, four hundred people short and they steadily trying to pull. And they got a lot more to go up and pull against us as far as the type, um, businesses that they have. But I'm just, I'm just laying it out there. The reason why I got to say these things, what I'm saying is because when we don't do it, I can tell you what's gonna happen right away. You know, because there's some things that we need to do come October first for our personnel and trying to still retain because people are steadily still trying to pull our well-trained workforce. So that is, and, and recruiting, retaining and keeping people where they are is the bigger thing. It's opposite of what a lot of people thinking. It's not a matter of just trying to hire the ones here. Because the loyal and dedicated, they gonna work till they fall. They gonna be here until they fall. But they got to be seen about too because they also have families. So that's part of the problem. The recruit thing, I don't know, we, we screwed that up throughout the whole United States as far as people wanting to work and do things. Nobody else think have an answer to that. But the things we have to lay out is to make sure in the course of this city's direction, what we will be able to do or not be able to do.
Let, let me ask this. So it, it appears, it has three component. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone. We're looking at, um, hiring and retention. We're looking at all the infrastructure, which includes roads and everything else. And we're also looking at credit rating. Can we expound on the credit rating?
Well, you saw, you know, one of the things that was suggested is to say, okay, we got a rating, so we have good reserves.
Mm-hmm.
We made sure of that. We have good reserves. But when you start tampering with, there's something else. That, I, this, this just gotta be spoken. My fear as city manager here is this. We're looking at unstable situation right now with the housing authority. Ms. Mary May Rose left here. We know it's a situation there where the housing authority may have to have help. We've already cut fifty thousand dollar check last council meeting. All right. Not only we're looking at that, we look at a. Not only we're looking at that, we look at a school system right now. That not only did the superintendent leave, which me and Randy had a great relationship, but he's taking everything with him that he possibly could. That was there to assist it. The A D director, anybody else think offer job to drain that system. Their books gotta be looked at because all of their schools is up under construction here and there too, looking at make sure that go. We got Russell County government right down the street from us, when we in our main offices. Looking at that point to see what's going on, so. When you start looking or think that you got those reserves or something to be played with or touch, that's not an option.
Which were the fact that credit rating.
You look at, yes, directly. And you look at, not only that, you look at what's, you try to you try not to co-mingle those things, cause you gonna fail. If you do, you know, I know I run the city different, but we've been successful. And and the people that run this city with us have been successful, we hadn't been to that spot. But now it's difficult, even even for me and I stay on top of numbers. But this is it's kind of scary because of trying to compete for that, but you don't, you don't. I tell you what, we're sitting here right now and we are lacking a whole lot of things we need to do in this city right now. We got streets, we got certain places in this city that need overhaul throughout, I know we can't change, I tell people outside, we can't make this a brand new city. And people want, you know, people have patience, but you have to take advantage of. The river, we gotta take advantage of that, we gotta take advantage of people who do want to live here, we have companies coming, we have companies. But at the same time, they gotta build it, they gotta finish building those places for those jobs, they gotta get. Our thing is our immediate need, that's what's affecting us. It's not the long range, I'm not worried about that, that's gonna be okay. The next person to step here in this job, whether it gonna have a gravy train. Everything is gonna be set for them, it's gonna be nice, but we have a situation that's current and that's part of the problem. So it's it's it it won't, we just have to live with whatever happens. And we will make it whichever.
Be off a comment, um, Mr. Hunter, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead, I'll talk too much anyway.
So the um the increased use of this municipal sales tax. It was um, I was straddling the fence with it. And um, one thing I did not want to do and I would have been more um acceptable to the uh occupational tax. Um because those that work within the city, within um the county, however we would have done it. They would have been the more apt to afford um the the tax increase or or see it um not hit so hard. And one thing I did not want to do is to see the citizens uh take their tax dollars elsewhere. Uh well, the taxes are too high over here, I live next door to Georgia, I'll go to Georgia. Um and we heard we saw that with the sales tax, um excuse me, with the uh gas tax in Georgia, when they um. Suspended the gas tax, I heard some of my constituents say, well, I go to Georgia to get, well, you know, that's all right, you you're free to go wherever. But we gotta remember, you live in Phoenix City, you live in this uh uh city. And this is, the city thrives on our tax dollars. Now, me personally. It 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 what what would bring me my vote to to vote for this is. We just finished the budget and we talked about. Hiring qualified individuals, being competitive in the job market, salary competitiveness. I did it and I will do it, I will vote yes because John Smith, I'm just throwing a name out there. Is below poverty when it comes to his salary. So I'm doing it so that salary increase could happen and we can get these workers, we can continue to market. Uh the city uh to get qualified workers to work. On June twenty second, we had our second uh meeting um. Of the month, but it was the second meeting also uh that we had at six o'clock, the district meeting. And I held the meeting, a short meeting before that. That was June twenty second, if my memory serves me correctly. And on June twenty third, one of those uh citizen called me and said. They had repeatedly called the city and could not get the runaway cut, not get the uh. The uh trees off the line and so forth. I personally went up there and I cut down some of those trees at two, three o'clock in the daytime, so I know what it's like. To be working in the heat because I do it every day at my house and then it ain't about me, it's about the people who live right here in the community. But my point is, I wanna see our workforce increase, I wanna see our workforce salary increase. That's why I would vote and I got the answer to all the constituents that will call me and ask me why I voted the way I did. And I'll respond as I am responding now. Because I know that the salaries that I've seen and and you know, and the um the level of skill set that is needed. And to recruit and retain qualified workers within our municipality. I believe this is what my vote has to do. We I will say yes in in hope that it's passed, so I can see an increase in our workforce and salary. I understand that this sales tax increase will go into effect October the one, is that correct, Mr. Hunter? When would their increase of salary uh go into effect?
Information, we can start putting the scales back in place to see where we're gonna go with it, but I did, we got things laid out. Well, I know where to go with it already, but you know, you don't gonna put the cart before the horse, so I had to see which way this situation pans out.
But let let me be reminded again.
It would be right off, right immediately.
It it's three component, they are very, very important components and we can't forget that. Uh as we've been talking about hiring and retaining. We got a lot of infrastructure and also the credit rating, I mean, all of those things are very important. Uh that could affect, so you know, we got some more discussion we need to do, we'll do that. Uh but you know, it's three components of this. Uh so I'll just say that and anything else, any other dialogue?
Uh yes, sir, I would like to elaborate on just a little bit, as I sit here and listen to what is being said by Councilmember Johnson. You know, and we talking about occupation tax, as we. I said earlier, it gonna take something like two year, maybe three years, who knows? But we need this now because uh let me tell you why, and we're gonna say this, but Mr. Hunter. While I live in Colesack round there, we had some folks just moving, I think it from. California, where they from the military folk, they say, okay, I'm in the yard, he said, sir, he said, they tell me you are a representative over here, I said, yes, I am. He said, I know this water been running three weeks right here, down the street, three weeks right here. When is the city gonna get around to it, I said, sir, we are very short, uh they are aware of the situation, I said, but we will get to it. I I told that guy just like that, he said, okay, thank you very much, you pull off, but it had, but folks are noticing. They're they're noticing, so we need to do something, we need to do something, they're noticing.
We had a large main break Friday, John to tell you. We and a lot of time, see people out, they go home, they somewhere else when this city, the way the city operate. We haven't worked closely with Columbus a lot now to help one another. But Columbus has been over this city two times over the last few weeks. Because of not having or the ones that you've already worked to death, bringing them right back in when you have emergency. See, what people need to understand, this city never closes. And some people that work in administrative offices around here to come in, eight to five to go, but. Police department, fire department, water treatment, water filtration, wastewater, date collection, they never close. Twenty-four seven, it's every day and it's emergencies popping up and popping up and popping up. And these are, I want people to understand, over a half hour jobs in this city are labor jobs. See, a lot of people, we look at TV and we see other people saying, well, they're closing their four to five hundred. Afflax or those whatever stuff, okay, they can work at home sometime. Okay, when the pandemic was going on, they could work with computers and stuff, you cannot maintain, you can't dig a ditch from home. You know what I mean, you can't you can't do that, you can't to have be out there, you gotta have people to operate that equipment. And those people have done the same thing people done in the hot hot tiny, I can't help the way it's going, they're saying we are imported. And we want to be paid better and in some places it is working. Here, we do have to continuously fight and strive to get people there, but you can't maintain this city, we have we. We have a labor workforce for the most part and people need to understand that and when they out there in a hundred and ten degrees weather and index here and then whatever this stuff, I'm not saying. And and some of those people that's out there weighing those factors and saying their thing, well, it's not gonna help this and it's not gonna help that, well. They don't exactly know all the answers, these are just like we don't. But they'll say that in a minute, that's, but we as a city has have things in place to put forth one hundred percent effort. So nobody can say, well, we just looked away and went along with somebody else's saying, that's not their responsibility. You know, it's ours to take care of that and take a look at that and that's on, no matter who's on this council, no matter. Who's in the city manager seat or who's working as these department heads, you're gonna be faced with it and 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 you all know yourself. It's been tougher over the past few years, no matter what, no matter which way you look at it, it's been tougher and it's a lot, these decisions are tough. You know, and like I say, whichever way it falls, we have to go and go from there. I've been here. A long time, like I say, and I understand tough times, understand hard times, the whole world. You know, my first uniforms to work here came out of an attic. In the attic, you had to bend over to get those, put them on, was happy to get them, was was great, you know. Had a job, was proud to be there and whatever this stuff, but so much has changed. I mean, opportunities have been great, I can't complain about that, you know, anything, I wanna see other people have opportunities. And I wanna see this city thrive because and and another thing is when you can't, from my standpoint. When you can't produce and give the departments what they need to function. That starts a disgruntled out of this world too. Because you are asking them to do a job that don't, I have supervisors that's really probably gonna have to get some mental help before this is over because. They are they are trying to get a job done with not enough people to do it. And it's driving them crazy because they wanna do a good job. They do wanna do a good job, they wanna make it, you know, but they're looking for us and we have to do to try to compete and I'm not saying, you know. It's gonna work, I understand everything that everybody's saying.
It's no guarantees.
It's 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 not there.
No guarantees out of the way.
Yeah, effort is got to be there, you know.
Great discussion, very open, very transparent, so. Uh anything else, counsel? Alright, we have a motion in the second, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
No.
Councilmember Gordy?
No.
Mayor Lou?
Yes.
Okay, Ms.? Mr. Brandt? City attorney?
Mayor and counsel, we we have one claim on the agenda today filed by Lawrence Wayne Jelks. Lives at twenty-four oh five Delbrock Court in Phoenix City. Um Mr. Jelks had a tree um falling his uh fence, the the tree is actually. Um on city property. Um you've got the memorandum from our department head, Parks and Recreation where. He states that the tree was indeed uh on our property, that there had been some bad weather. That could have damaged the tree before it fell, uh but no one had given the city notice. Um that the tree was diseased or in any way uh capable of falling. Including the property owner who would have the the best view of the tree. And uh under Alabama law, if we don't have notice, then we're not liable, so I recommend we deny the claim.
Okay, counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of his recommendation, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alright, motion, Councilman Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lou?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, counsel, thanks to all the department head and all the workers and at this time, I would like to ask. If any of the council member has any words they would like to have a takeaway. Okay, there's not any, Mr. Hunter, anything you want to add a takeaway?
No, sir, I'm about to drain now. I think everything's gonna be okay, I think they can understand all of us.
Well, you know.
Have to look at things in different ways, so everything is good to go.
Again, we had great discussion, as I hope everyone sees. Uh we know that at times there's tough decision we have to make and you know, as I always say, we live in the best country in the world, you. Voted up or down in whichever end you're on, uh you still responsible for making the process work as best as we can.
Yeah, man.
There's no guarantees in anything, uh there's nothing, but I do uh hope that everyone see how we try to operate. We don't concoct votes, we don't talk about who's gonna vote for what, that's first of all, that is uh not ethical. And we're all independent thinkers and uh the the process has been followed. So with that, we would like to say thank you to everyone and to our community, as we always say. Uh you know, let's let's be a lifted and not a leaner and we all need to lift each other. There's days that we all can get in a funk, that the problem occurs if everybody's in a funk. Then we have no one to lift the other person up, so we thank God that never happens. And we pray that it don't happen. So with that said, we certainly thank everyone, we thank C T V Bean for bringing this to our citizen. And with that said, we do stand adjourned, thank you all so much.